Call me in order.
Mr. Shockley.
Here.
Mr. McGuire. Mr. Cochran.
Present.
Ms. Clark. Ms. Payne Hewer.
Here.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Collier's here.
Have a chance to go through the public hearing a minute?
Typosenol.
Typosenol.
I wasn't gonna call you out.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, and don't see if he's getting down on me for doing that. I'm fine to hell.
That's what I didn't do. I, uh...
Damned if you...
I said, I know who'll take care of it.
No, damned if you do and damned if you don't. Say, I'm not gonna do it anymore, I promise.
Just let them be wrong.
Just let them be wrong. Always kill the mean.
Yeah, let them look stupid.
And then...
I make a motion to prove the minutes is presented.
As amended?
As amended and presented.
Second.
On paper?
They're checking our regular business meeting. I have just one little thing on it and this, uh, mistress of the minutes is... I think we changed that on the floor, but I'll get back to you.
I'll make a motion to accept it as amended.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
New business discussion approval of our spotlight award.
Okay. These are basically what went out, press releases.
Okay.
The very few rules to it. And the form using it up in the lobby. Of course, if anybody wants to give it to you orally, that's fine. Go down, take a picture. I think we should take nominations however we feel. Make it all open.
So we need a picture and then, uh, sort of, like, see it?
You don't have to ha- I mean, I can take care of the pictures.
Okay, just know where they are.
Right.
But the bold blue with the shape on the right side is...
Yeah, man, that is, that's really...
It's really going to be all...
It is.
I'm calling on that.
Neil, I can't even tell if I could've...
I'd much rather see a misspelled word.
Me too.
I hate that. I can't do this, really.
Okay, it's for this, guys. Uh...
Oh, I see, hit now.
Yeah, I thought...
If you flip that around, if you flip it around, it's a little bit...
I didn't want to do that, though. I wanted to throw you down.
Everyone would create it.
Around, man.
I wanted to keep everybody on their toes.
You got it.
It's fun if you're lefty.
Okay, so it was very simple rules what we discussed. I don't wanna make this complicated for the public. The more interaction you get, the better off to empower people.
My question is, what have we ever talked?
Well, then, I think we're all adults, can't we do...
Well, yeah, I know, but that's...
Lock every consideration.
Right.
Put that into consideration for the next, next award.
Right.
Well, yeah, either that or coin toss, I always thought, just thinking maybe...
You can come here and fight.
Into a coin toss.
Yeah, well, yeah, I wasn't worried about that.
They can come and fight at that.
Yeah. So you got two pe- two houses and three people like this people out, people like this house?
I'm not too worried about that, really. Still, this isn't a real... The main thing we gotta watch is that people don't think the process contaminated. That's why no city employees, you know, that type.
I'm hoping to put my yard in.
Just so it's plain for the rest of you guys, as far as the sign goes...
Oh, the yard is, yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
The, the signs, the signs made, I thought I had the two, the reason why I sent you by three originally is because I already had a frame sitting at my house, so I was making insert. And, uh, we, I didn't, I guess I gave that frame away. So I ordered a new one and normally takes two days, gets it on the third day. I thought it'd be in today, but then Monday happened, so it's today. It should be in tomorrow. I'll definitely have a tour. I don't know, when, when are you planning on sticking this in?
Tomorrow sometime, tomorrow evening.
Well, it's not gonna come in till tomorrow, and I'm gonna be in fit, so whenever I get home or whatever, then the frame will be in, and then I'll be able to... I can get to you late that night or early in the day.
Yeah, either one, because I'd rather wait to go by their house. Of course, I'll be, make it clear, speaking on the commission's behalf, I'm going to let Rachel know who won. And, um, go by their house if they want the sign. You know, some people may don't want the sign in their yard.
So the dead- the deadline is the first Monday of the month?
Right. I will come up here, pick up any nomination forms. They're turning them in the water department and cycling them back to, uh, Rachel.
So if I want to nominate somebody, I bring it to City Hall by the Monday, first Monday?
You can.
Okay, I didn't know that. I thought we were gonna say verbally.
You can say it verbally too, though. I'm going to take nominations anyway.
I got you.
I can, right now. Because the more involvement, the better.
So I can come by your house and give it to you?
Yeah.
Okay. We can just email it, right? I mean, you...
Yeah, you'll email it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You can text me who you think.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think we need to make this... I, I would like to know all about them, though, so I can make a list for you guys before and have the pictures. But that's not complicated, huh?
If we're gonna vote on it, we're gonna have to see what, you know, kinda...
Yeah, I do.
Right.
Okay.
If, no, there's no nominations, is, uh, is the award gonna stay with the whoever has it the previous month?
No, we've... That's why everybody needs to have at least one. You know, like mine for this time. Where did they come from? Three people mentioned the Mitchell Street, three city employees did. And, uh, one mentioned the East Main Street. So I said, well, I don't have any nominations, so why not?
Yeah, I, I see, no, I think that's good. I haven't had a chance to go.
You know, I'll take them anyway. They're really not my nominations.
No.
No, we gotta approve this.
For the award.
Oh, just something we're gonna do.
Yeah.
This is for the award.
So I'll make, um, oh, and did I tell you I'm gonna let Rachel know through email or whatever who won the award? And then get her a picture, text.
Yeah, and then she'll...
That's great.
And then she will do the media stuff, do her skill set. Rachel's been a big help for this.
Good.
She has, and Tyler has too.
Good, good deal.
So...
All right.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept it, present it.
A second.
What you got?
On paper?
All right.
Now, discussion approval of recipients, uh, resi- uh, residential and business spotlight award. Now that you're talking for your nominations.
Well, let's do business first.
Okay.
I mean, get that out of the way. My nomination for this month is Joe's Pizza. Got several reasons for it. That building was in Rossett. And it would've cost us... How much you think that building would've cost us if we'd added four of them?
I'd say it was probably thirty-five or forty-two.
That much?
Yep, on a brick there, the basement.
Now, I know that's enterprise, and you could make the argument against it because of that. However, it still, he saved the building. He committed to Benton, and he didn't have to do that. Another reason I'd like to do it is because of something that happened in the past with a couple of former councilmen. He was not treated right. It was in a public meeting, one of them talked to him like a dog. And I would just like to, hm, encase the hatchet in concrete and bury it for good. Now, I'm not talking about the president council, I'm talking about...
He ma- that made a big improvement on East Main, though.
It did.
I mean, that was the talk of Benton when he was doing... Beckham Wall, you know, hey, but, but they, that was a big improvement.
I mean, we got several that can have it, you know, that's qualified for it, in my opinion. But I would like to start out on the right foot.
That's it.
With Joe's.
Yeah, that's great. I, I think you had a good nomination too on the...
Yeah, so my nomination, I, I was trying to think of someone that has had a consistent, good-looking property.
Right.
And then someone that has, uh, just done a great job with updates and whatnot. My consistent property, I think at some point, uh, Stephen Pay- Paid Puro Home, that property always looked outstanding.
Maybe it does.
So he lives there, it is also his home and whatnot, um, he's gonna, you know, eventually, I, I would like to nominate him. But for most improved, uh, I, I tagged you guys in that post. I don't know if it's on, I printed out pictures here if you guys, if any of you guys didn't see it or whatever. Um, but, uh, the, what used to be the Webster Street apartment, now, I don't know, you don't have...
Yeah, I've not seen that, yeah.
What used to be the what, what used to be the Webster?
I live right now from it, I mean, I'm...
What you, I can tell you's being for the nomination.
I didn't know that they were doing that.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, uh, John got hold of him, and, um, he's invested tens of thousands of dollars and making those nice, he's reading on the inside.
What's it called now?
Called O'Dea, that one is. And, um, he's, he's just done a great job. And I, there's honestly probably more land, uh, landlords in this community than there's homeowners. Um, and I think that, uh, motivating, uh, which I'm not, I don't, I hope this motivates them, uh, this award and stuff like that. But, uh, to see some of them landlords, uh, start doing a better job with their properties, uh, it can't hurt. So, um, John does a good job, and I think he needs to be recognized for, uh, providing quality living, uh, for those people and what he's done with this.
And he's gonna really look at it.
This right here, oh, he's...
It is, no, the reason I'm holding off on O'Dell this month is there's a couple issues that's about to go on on Webster Street. And I'm gonna see how he handles.
Well, I'm not, I'm not dying to do this personal stuff, I'm saying it from, or even the best, I'm saying it...
No, this isn't, this will affect things.
Okay.
And everyone, but...
Just from, from, for right now, that would be one I would...
I thought next month...
Possibly, yeah. I'm just making the nomination.
And in fact, I'm gonna talk to Dave about some of it tonight.
Okay, well, anyways, that's my nomination is Joe's Pizza.
Yeah, but, uh, he has done a fantastic job. And he's put up all that security.
Yeah, he put up new life, he put in new security cameras, he's redone the inside, uh, there's no more smoking in there, the animal situation is gone. He's provided an outside area where people can go outside and smoke. He's poured tons of rock in there, um, the inside, he's rea- the people has moved out, he's redone the apartments and whatnot, there's pictures of those online or whatever. Um, tons of pest control, the basement or whatever, he's redoing the basement inside for coin laundry and stuff. Um, it's a big improvement for that entire area.
You would believe what he holds out, actually.
He redone brick on the side.
I could not believe...
What is his name?
His name's John O'Dell. John and Rose are O'Dell, O'Dell, they go by the J and R property, they own several of them.
I mean, I, I see where you're coming from. You know, and I know it's a brand name, but irregardless, you have to...
Or a destruction company else?
He doesn't know, there's, okay, there's like, pick John O'Dell, so you gotta remember.
That's John O'Dell of Frankfurt.
This, this is a...
Yeah.
Does he live here?
Um, he, he doesn't anymore, he lives in Florida now, he lives in Cl- uh, Claymont.
All right.
But he vaulted that off for her. Oh, you wouldn't believe what he got into.
Okay.
My nomination's gonna be Sonic, that I gotta do the awesome thing with that O C O.
Yep.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That looks nice.
Give him any mic?
Uh, as far as commercial, I, I'd like, I'd like to take two of them.
Okay.
I mean, I have to apologize, I didn't get any nominations this, this month. I've been running around with Martha nursing over now and just...
Oh, is she? I'm sorry.
I've been every day, just something, and I, you know.
Yeah.
I just haven't had a chance, but I, I will. I'll, I'll get out and drive around, try to get some nominations, but I just haven't.
You took mine. It is not, so...
Well...
Sonic's up and going.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it is nice when you go and see an old building come down and spring up new and...
Isn't it?
And it is, it can be too.
And, and not an office building, and I know something, you know...
Our apartment.
Yeah, but on that location, I wanted retail, you know.
So as far as residential, the residential part, who we have?
Well, you guys got my two that people had told me about.
She has Steve Browning's house on East Main, got the flowers and whatnot outside.
Yeah, I'll go by there quite a bit.
Uh, I don't know whose house the other...
Oh, I forget her name, uh...
So Mitchell Street, is that?
Yeah, on the corner of Mitchell and Maple.
Okay, yeah, I know where that is, yeah.
Very nice little home, older home, been, uh, you know, fixed up, modernized, she always has it real neat. Another reason I kinda went with one too is, well, maybe we should vote on the business first, huh? Okay, I guess we should.
We got the nomination.
I got, uh, I get, I, I hope, I got ready to back over right here. So we're doing a business and a...
Yep, really similar.
Yeah.
Oh, I screwed up, I only made one sign. I didn't know that we were doing, I didn't know that we were doing the two like that, so I'll, I'll make another one.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, yeah.
I didn't realize that we were doing that like that.
Let's go ahead and take a vote on it.
Yeah, go ahead and do it, I mean, I, I'll get a...
Well, you, you don't have to be put up next day.
Right.
You can wait or so, I mean, those folks...
We'll get it.
You give me a couple days, I can, I can make...
We'll get it.
The frame is the problem.
We're not gonna stress out over this.
Uh, well, there'll be other months, too.
That's right.
We'll, we'll give them their due, I think it's great.
I mean, I know we're a government harm, but we don't have to be.
Wanna take a vote?
Yeah, I'm sitting here stressing over how I'm gonna word this in the notes, but, uh, so I guess, I guess what I'll do is, um, I'll just call them out. And whoever wants to vote for what, Rachel, I'll tally it, and then I'll...
So you count, that way you get one vote for each one?
Yeah. Is that, is that how we wanna do it?
Yeah.
I would say so, and then whoever gets the most.
So we got four total, Joe's Pizza, Paid Puro Home, Vote for Your Apartments, and Sonic.
Sonic, yeah.
All right, who wants to vote for Joe's Pizza?
I'll, I'll vote for Joe's Pizza. They made such a drastic change there, I think that's...
There's gotta be two, two, two. All right, uh, Paid Puro Home?
Good one.
Vote for Your Apartments?
We can save them for later, 'cause I think we're all over the votes.
Yeah, I knew they were gonna win.
I was gonna say, we got, we got the next three months covered here, so...
I know, it's that deal, let's just...
Well, we need to keep bringing...
I mean, I can't argue about Paid Puro.
The reason why I didn't understand the, the two business things, 'cause at some point, you know, unless we're putting like a five-year limit on this, we're gonna run out of nice properties in town. So I thought that you go...
No, it's all... You can be done more than once, as long as...
I think we need to...
Just for business, go ahead and...
Recognize it at this meeting.
I can't, I can't anymore, I'm too fat, I won't either.
You need to chill out, keep calm down and chill out.
My opinion, if we keep bringing up good properties and keep nominating them and get them on a list, then if we do have a situation, we can always go back and, like I said, Mike said, we've got to cover the next three months. But we do need to keep looking and recognizing...
Sure, yeah.
It is a little bit different to be fighting over good properties than shitty properties.
Right.
Must find a total line.
See, that's what I mean, this is pleasant, this is pleasant.
We will be asking Dave to go tear them, tear them down.
So residential, I, I got Steve Browning, and I got the house at Mitchell and Maple.
Right.
So what, Mitchell, do we have a name for that one?
Could you look up the owner of that, please?
Mitchell and Maple.
It was.
What, what, what was the address, do you guys remember?
It's the street and Maple, yeah, I know what you're talking about. That's your turn there, there John D. Akins, SCD Ray, and that Mitchell.
Uh-huh. Are you talking about Dorchness's place?
You go one block, is it, it could be Dorchness property, it's gotta be the one across the street.
This is the brick one, isn't it?
Yeah. This is the brick one that's painted green, right? Yeah.
Kind of a... Has a brown door, front door. They had redone it about seven or eight years ago, maybe even nine.
Okay.
Did you take a picture, you...
Yeah, look, no, here. One pass around.
Yeah.
No, it's not the green one.
That's not the one I remembered in my mind.
That's the, that's the one you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one. Oh, okay, that's not the one I was thinking of either.
Were you thinking of the green one there? No, no, that's up for sale now, I know what you're saying.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I can't pull it up on your test, I, I saw, I saw...
Sure, just pass it around, Mike.
So with this one, with the br- with that one there, that's, that's brown.
That's Steve Browning.
Yeah.
I got that one.
Can I see that one?
What's the address on that one on Mitchell? I forgot. All righty.
Yeah, Steve, oh, okay, Steve Kim's place.
Well, it makes the, uh...
Across the high school.
High plus high school, makes the, uh, parking lot.
That's where, uh, that's where Curtis Rock and she lived.
Mm-hmm.
Well, uh, Pers, Curtis Cochran.
Anything he's watching, yeah.
Is there, no, his, his residential without a picture, it's kinda hard to do, and I had one, I didn't go buy me a picture of it.
Do you still have the address that I sent you on that Mitchell Street?
Is it on your emails, is that what you said?
She takes a dis...
Oh, it's a text, okay.
Uh, he didn't give me a text. Two nomination for residential, I did, did, potentially tried to find other homes on Mitchell Street.
Yeah, that's the other. What about the emails? Did the address show up?
I think she's there.
It may have been in the emails.
Yeah.
I think it was an email.
Was it?
It was an email, 'cause that, yeah, I...
What was the address on that? I didn't, didn't write it down. Okay, so Paid Puro Home is the business, is that?
So do I need to specify on the other sign, like, that it is, there's a difference between the business and the, uh, just regular property, or are they the exact same sign?
Are they the kind you stick to the ground?
Yeah, no, I can dig it out, but I'm saying as far as the verbiage, that's what it says on it, like, do I need to specify anything, 'cause it, right now it just says the same property. Does there need to be a different, something to separate the two, or...
Terrible signal right here.
Terrible wifi?
I want the wifi, isn't it?
Yeah.
Get out and push.
You can't wish.
No, no, I didn't know.
I think we probably need to be...
Keep up the saying, you know.
When I was in those two chances, that one over there, I used to get Barton House across from Post Office.
Mm-hmm.
You're talking about?
Yeah, now that's not, that's not.
They've added a bunch of new concrete blocks on the scrap, made it kind of south burning or anything too.
What's the address on that?
Fourth Street.
You're talking about the White House with the gazebo?
Yep.
Oh.
No, no.
No.
No, this is a brick house.
Across from the post office.
That's actually, no, it's across from, be across from the Fifth Eastern.
Well, you know, Fifth Eastern, yeah.
I mean, more on north, across Fifth Eastern.
Yeah, there's the concrete block on the right.
I'm thinking more, more.
So, any other nominations?
I didn't, uh, think about doing the residential, actually, I don't, I don't have anything.
So, can we try to vote to the same, to the same way?
You can, Rick, you can.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, I'm, I'm just gonna refer to it as the Mitchell and Maple.
You couldn't find it on the email?
Actually, who's that, uh, who's that, the re- down there on the, uh, on Pope Street going, uh, they just redid that story and half house, whatever, it's gray, got the ruined shutters. They just redid the whole thing, it's super nice. It's, uh, Kaiatu's house, down from Thomas, I think where Thomas lives.
Oh.
You know that house? I don't know who that, they did a great job on redoing that house.
They cleaned that whole thing up.
They cleaned that whole thing up, yeah, so I'll recommend them, I don't know, I, it's hard to say that, because you guys don't know what that looks like.
Yeah, I know.
By twenty East Main and one oh two Mitchell.
I don't know where that is, but whoever that is on Pope Street, they did a great job.
One oh two?
No, couldn't be one oh two.
No.
On the, on the northwest corner.
Is that what I could?
Is that the end of the street where Travis Severn lives? Is it on the end, if you go to the, yeah, the...
I know it, I know it. Now I got one.
Curve, the road, lay it off there.
That's right.
The right, the, the, that subdivision out there?
So the, uh...
Traveling south on Pope, make the right hand turn, go up to the Environment One?
You go up to what?
Environment One subdivision.
Yeah, so before you get there, before you make that right or whatever, like, probably five houses, probably five houses to the, uh, north of that or whatever.
Yeah, you're, you're north of Mike Thomas's house, not south.
Yeah, north of Mike Thomas, yeah, probably three houses north.
I do have someone on nominate.
Okay.
And that's Jeff Demonti, he's over on Jones Street.
Yeah.
He owns his house and the one next to it, and he owns the, the other part of the Peyton concrete block plant.
Yeah.
That's a good one.
And the property across the street, doesn't he, the, the whole property across the street, you always get it trimmed up, the...
I like, I like that because it's an older neighborhood. And this is basically the first prong of a three-pronged approach for this neighborhood. I like Demonti. Do you know the address?
I can get it.
Yeah, we can get it.
Yeah.
After that.
Can you get the address, Dave?
Maybe.
I'll...
Literally, one of us can leave here and get it.
Go upstairs.
Yeah, we, we, we'll get it after you.
I, I do like that.
Yeah, he, he's always out there keeping everything...
Yes, he does.
Trimmed up, and he helps a lot with his neighbors.
And it is an older neighborhood, I, I'll put, oh, well, you nominated him, so who do we have so far?
The Br- Steve Browning, Mitchell and Maple, the Demonti property and the Pope Street one.
I'm gonna have five for now, we got those four.
Yeah, so it's...
So that's four nominations.
Is it four?
Yep.
Okay.
So, who do we have for Steve Browning?
I'll vote for Steve.
We got two. Who do we have for Mitchell Maple?
Love that one.
Yeah, I will go with Mitchell, because three people told me about it.
Okay, so, how about Jeff Demonti?
You know, I didn't either, we're getting up, gee, 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 I'm...
We, we've got a three-way tie.
And that's what I'm saying.
Then how do we, brought here to St. Louis on freeway?
No, now you're making six signs.
Now I'm making two signs? It's getting costly, man.
Uh... Well, guys...
Coin toss, or something like that, next time we'll pick up an extra.
How about we do a file, like, do those three, well, actually, that's a, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. Let the public just vote?
I tell you what.
We could throw their names in a, in a hat and...
And carpool them out?
Have someone pull it out, and that'll be the winner. Have someone pull it out and that'll be the winner.
That, that might be the way to do it.
How's that?
To do, you know, from now on, tell the nominations A, B, C, have them listed that way and pull it out.
Here, just a second. Now, who do we have?
Uh, Steve Browning.
Jeff, I'm just gonna put Jeff, okay.
Dago, just put Dago.
Yeah, I could've. Okay, and who else?
Mitchell Maple.
Steve.
Yep, Steve Browning.
Mitchell and Maple, okay.
And Steve Browning.
Steve, I got him.
Okay, Mitchell Maple.
Pope Street.
Pope Street. Oh, we, we do have Pope Street, but we got zero votes. Yeah, don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it.
I gotta make sure that, we have another.
Okay, do we have anybody who's honest in the audience?
No.
No, don't say anybody.
Probably Kathy.
Kathy's the only one I know out there, definitely.
I don't know, I think I lost that position once again.
Yeah, but she's a politician, uh, I tell you. I tell you what, I guess really the public should do it though.
Oh, yeah?
That's fine.
Well, okay.
Well, don't you think?
You're implying the honesty thing again, right?
Let Tom shuffle one.
No.
Okay, who wants to draw?
Rocky don't think we're first, buddy.
Who wants to draw?
Rocky wanna draw.
No, Rocky.
You got nothing else.
I got a criminal record, just make all of them stand up.
Jeff.
All right.
All right.
Way to go.
You go, Jeff.
Damati.
I think the updates on the council should probably be moved to over there. It's going to discussion approval committee to gather information regarding city cleanup.
Okay, what time is it? I'll try to make this shorter than I'm going to. Okay, where are we? Okay, I had, I've been aware of this for a while, but I had three personal incidents to have. In the past about three weeks, that brought home our problem with the neighborhood. Now, there's lots of reasons you can point to it, deindustrialization, jobs, poverty, whatever, flight forbidden. But, fact remains, or flight from Illinois, I should say, I guess, the fact remains, we got a problem, no matter what the reason is. And we've got to clean it up. Now, some of these neighborhoods has been suffering from the blight creep for ten, twenty years. Every time you go by, every year, just think about it, you drive through that neighborhood, it just keeps extending.
We all agree with you, Dave.
And, um, the, there's other neighborhoods, but I'm gonna use Two Street in my own neighborhood. Church Street and Webster Street, perfect example of the, you know, blight creep. Okay, one thing, I, I did talk to an outside lawyer who has some municipal experience. What I was wanting to do, she doesn't think can be done, she thinks it'd be too much liability for the city. Because that was like them pick out things, properties that need to be cleaned up, maybe get volunteers to go in there and clean them up. Especially for people who can't do it themselves, you know, too much liability for the city. It's city. So, what I would like to do, these people, the ones I've talked to, a lot of them feel alienated now, the ones who are still keeping up their property. And when you have alienation, you have the subcultures, people just think they're not being listened to. Well, you know, who does most of the working and living and dying in this town? It's the people in the neighborhoods. So, what, this probably will end up not going through the city or anything like that, I would like to have a point person with the city council. But I am thinking now shifting to a volunteer organization, getting together, have appointment in the churches, the Elks, you know, places like that, the Boy Scouts. They can reach out to their members, see what's in their neighborhood that needs to be cleaned up. And then get the volunteers to go in and clean it up. It's the same concept, really, that I'm thinking about. As the Southern Baptist chainsaw people that go into storms, same concept as that. I think it can be done. I think we can empower the people in the neighborhoods, too. They have to be empowered to care. And this is one way for them to get involved. You know, and a lot of times what's happened in other towns, when they've had volunteers, then the people start networking. Like this past summer, some of us got together in our neighborhood for an informal neighborhood watch. Go out, drive around at night, got rid of some of the kids causing damage, you know. Cops can't be anywhere, everywhere, but, you know, the thing is, so far, believe it or not, on the positive side, for as bad as some of these neighborhoods are. The crime rate, at least there's no violent crime, you know, murders, you know, that much. It's all crime with, you know, substance abuse and those connected with poverty. Try giving these people a hand up and see how, if they can take control of their own neighborhoods. So, I don't think I'm gonna be able to go through the city on this, on this because of liability. What do you guys think about volunteer organizations? Like you could be, or Dave, for the Catholic Church.
Oh, Ben, are you talking about cutting down trees and things?
No.
I mean.
Nothing like that, I am talking more, say, uh, they need a little bit of painting done, maybe, weeding, mowing, that type of thing. Very, nothing like cutting trees down or anything like that.
Well, that's a possibility. I mean, trees are one of the big liabilities.
No, oh, yeah, yeah, it is, but.
You know, one of the things that I don't know, maybe Dave does, is on, if, if there is a but, now, this, this falls under my, under what I, I thought you Rico law. Um, with these drug busts going on, okay, you've got meth, you've got crack, you've got everything that's being located in these houses, you've got cash. Um, it used to be that that property was confiscated by, by the police department under Rico, is that, is that still there, Dave?
Yeah, I think those these properties were rented or.
Brown.
Foraged to the hills, so you get nothing out of it.
Nothing either way, oh.
Usually they stay away from them once, if there's any kind of a lien against them, because there's more paperwork than what it's worth. I know a while back, the, the, I know a group that did that, the, oh, the, people that was coming for sex offenders, the only, only car they kept was the one that was paid off, rest of them, they let them go back to wherever they came from. Some come get them because they were, you know, had more, had things to get them from.
Well, I think, I, we kind of did this, a couple of us in our neighborhood. We just went down, we had, got on mowers and drove through the block, and we found older people that their grass needed mowed, it was, that was all, you could tell. And we, we knock on the door and just say, hey, you know, do you, can we help you out? And the first thing they'd say, well, I've only got five bikes, I said, we're not here for that.
Right.
We'll mow your grass, we'll weed it, we'll fix it, you know, I mean, some of them, they, they're just elderly, like you said, you know, and their families are gone. They are very limited on mobility, uh, you know, I think, I mean, something like that, or.
Right.
You know, clean it up a ditch, or.
Right, and we could reach out, make a presentation to the garden club and to the hospital auxiliary, auxiliary. Because, you know, they, they, those are the people that are gonna know where the problem areas are. And just go in and take a block or whatever your, you know, neighborhood. But, you know, there's places in town, too, that the neighborhood's good, you know, the houses get nice, but three blocks away, it's just creeping in on you, you can see it. And we've got to stop it somehow, we've got.
On behalf, you know, on behalf of this, my wife sells real estate, okay? And she said the other day, there was a comment somebody made on Facebook or something, that everybody's moving out, okay, for whatever reason. But like she looked and told me, this is the best year, year she's had in selling property in twenty years. You've got an influx of older people that's coming into the community.
Coming back.
Yeah, that, you know.
See, that's another reason.
And I mean, that's just a positive, you know, you're, you're gonna have some of the, I'm sure.
Clean up the property.
We're looking for jobs, or whatever they gotta go to. But the influx of, uh, the property that, that she'd been a part of, it's middle-aged to older.
Right.
That's moving out of the major cities because of everything going on, you know, so I think that was encouraging, you know, to hear that, and.
So she said it was, did she say that it was people coming in for other cities, or are the people buying up all these cheap houses, but they're so cheap so they need landlords?
You've got that goes on, too, but no, these are people that's moving in for sale.
That's great, I didn't know that, that's good.
You know, and that's what she go by.
I can hear.
Now, you've got these flip houses.
Yeah, I see a lot of that, I know a lot of people that are around my age, whatever, that seem to, now they have three to five rental houses all of a sudden. So, and with everything, it seems like a lot of these houses that are sold are super cheap, so they're buying them, they're flipping them, they're renting them, all that stuff, so, I didn't know if that would've. You sell three houses, but they're all twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, you've got, yeah, I think, you know, I think that, you know, I.
It all factors in, I understand.
She would've been here, but she, she wanted a house, so.
That's great.
It was, you know, these flip houses, like, you're talking, I think, Dave, when you, you talked to her then, Dave, about three of them, that we had property somewhere that the city was wanting to get rid of? Or am I wrong, Dave?
I talked to your wife about tiny houses in the last month.
Was it? Maybe that, maybe I, maybe I got it wrong, but you've got these houses that are sitting there that are just totally abandoned, I mean, they're just, you know. And whether the city or however the system works, is, if you've got a flipper, if you've got a John O., okay, uh, or, you know, you've got flippers all over. If they, if there was, whatever the city put up against it, if they would compensate the flipper, say, you pay us back, the city, you know, and just turn it over. I mean, that's the only way it's gonna get fixed, you know, and that's just my, you know, you probably need to talk to real estate agents and.
Right.
The dummy guy in this next, I'm just looking at, these guys are looking for that property that we're sitting on, and it, you know what I'm saying, not, but.
But we've got to clean up these neighborhoods, empower these people. And, you know, if they think something's gonna be done, then they'll be more cooperative. And, you know, perhaps even talk to the chiefs, the police chief and the fire chief, see where your calls are, see what needs.
You know, if, if you've gotta get into it, I'm sure these flipper's get into it.
Yeah.
It, you know, as soon as you get it fixed up, you don't know who you're putting in there.
Right.
You know what I mean, and usually if somebody's trying to get in, they don't have a thousand bucks up front, you know. So, I mean, I understand that part of it, too, uh, you know, I, I think it's a good idea, like I said, it's whatever we, you know.
Okay, so what kind of a committee were you wanting to put together?
Well.
Nothing with the city, you said?
Nothing with the city now, but if somebody has any ideas, please come to my house. I've got those, I'm going to start contacting some of these organizations to see if they'll let us make a presentation, what we got in mind. Now, keep in mind that it's September, how much work can you do in the winter? So, it may have to be, you know, unless it's an emergency deal early spring. Do you think it'd work, Coy?
Well, I think, I think it would work for what Rocky was talking about, if you had enough neighbors that's gonna get together and say, hey, let's try to go help some folks. I, I mow, I mow my neighbor's yard across the street, lawnmower quit, I said, no, I'm, I'm mowing, I'm always helping him do stuff.
Yeah.
But, uh, I think, I think that's a, a good way, if you could get the neighborhoods involved and, you know, look down the street, if you know somebody there that's elderly or just can't get it done. I would pick up sticks and more, you know, mow and stuff like that, maybe, but as far as going in and trying to do any more than cleanup, I don't know how you can still do that.
I don't think we can, yeah, the only way would be if some oral person had a totally chopped roof. And you knew somebody that was in the industry.
Yeah.
That would donate it, that's the only way I would know to do something like that.
If you get to that, you have the, the companies that go in and do that anyway for the housing, yeah.
Right.
Right.
But see, we're not getting grants on this stuff, but some of the other towns are.
Is the city.
For these care downs. And I don't know why they're not getting them.
Crosswalk's there.
So, so Crosswalk does their work, is Crosswalk doing their work, you know?
Not that I'm aware of, but that, that's another people question we're having.
Well, here I go, my opinion is that's the first thing the city needs to do, they need to change who's doing their housing, that's the first thing.
I think they only apply for one grant this year.
I mean, you know, they, I, I have nothing against Crosswalk, but they need to get the, their city engineer and the folks that's working for their town to do their housing. They got, and then to get all the other grants, I mean, that's, you can get outside people to do certain things, but, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know, one of the things that, if I just interject on this, my ex runs Crosswalk. And what happens, by what she says, you know, when they put these kids out to get these application bills, nowadays, people are leery. You know, I mean, it's like they want it, but yet they're not willing, and what happens when you don't get the application, you lose a, you lose a funding.
Well, the city plays a big part in getting applications for housing, that's how it works. When you go to the city and you say, we're gonna, we're gonna try to rehab twenty houses, you've got to give me the housing, that's how it works.
Yeah.
And some towns, and why, some of these towns you're talking about gets more than others.
It's more.
It's because the city hall opens the door and says, tell me what we need to do. And if you don't have cooperation from your city, your city leaders, you know, city clerk and everybody getting all the information out there, then you, then it's, it's frustrating. And as far as administration of it, that's what you, you get paid for, but you gotta get the houses.
You're right.
They don't live there, they don't know the people.
But you know, people are getting disgusted because they've looked at the same mess for ten years. Now, you shouldn't have sat there in that neighborhood for ten years, it should've been taken care of.
That's what the nuisance rules.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, that's the key, there's been so many houses redone, rental houses, they got so many programs out there.
They have.
And, and I've seen communities, Christopher and.
Oh, yeah.
Moose Town.
Ziegler.
Ziegler, house after house after house, they go in, put siding in, windows, air conditioning, grow a new roof, clean it up.
Well, that's one of the things that you have to, you have to give out some information with people that wanna lease that, Tammy's got five houses of doing what she is, she can get people to put applications.
That's right. That's, that's another issue, people don't wanna, they don't, but, but then again, you, the city leaders know these people. They've gotta get a hold of their families, you know, when you, you, you go and administer a housing, you, you don't, you go into a town, you don't live here, you don't know nobody, and you, you're done housing for four or five other towns. And, and you're gonna go, and so you go in, and so the city's gotta lead the way on finding these houses, find these people, and go and knock on the door and say, we're gonna help, we're gonna give you fifty thousand dollars to your house, really? And, I mean, that's another thing, that when we started doing housing years, years ago, it's like, they thought it was a joke, not a joke. That's lots of money, so that, that's where the city comes in.
Right.
And that, and that's, and that, we're getting into a different subject here, but that's something with the water and, and all the sewer grants, too.
Yeah.
The city has to give the information in regards to all those folks along that way, and their income, and help with the guidelines, and you go to somebody's door, they won't answer the door to give you the, the stats and.
But you, you can see them standing, standing inside there.
And you see them, they won't come to the door, and you gotta, you know, say, hey, I got some help here, somebody's gotta know that person, because you can't trust somebody nowadays.
Well, it's just like the census takers, I had a neighbor would not answer her door, she was, and she didn't do anything illegal, she just wouldn't answer her door for strangers. I had, uh, you know, tell the census taker, she was the only one there, give her, give him the name, you know, swear to it and.
You're on the right track, Julie, what you're trying to do as far as the neighborhoods.
Uh-huh.
Like I said, grass mowing, picking up limbs, cutting down trees.
Yeah.
If you got a bunch of neighbors, yeah, I could see that happening, I, you know, but as far as getting somebody to do something with their house, it's a, it's a money issue, people, some people like to live, for others. And, but I think, I, I think the start of this is trying to get some housing grants in this town.
Right, once you're in there, though, and you develop a relationship, trying to develop a trust level, maybe, you know, you can do more, you know, it's snowball effect.
One of the, one of the things that I, that I was told many times, and virtual tests this, when, company I work for, when we try to go in and get grants, the first thing, the, the towns that didn't get them would say, well, we're doing your, we're doing your work for you, you're getting paid all this money. Yeah, okay, if you're gonna look at it that way. You're, you're the one getting paid, you oughta be doing this, well, there's a certain amount you can do, you know, we're strangers coming into a place.
Right.
You know, and, and that's where the, you gotta have everybody.
Yeah, you do, you gotta have everybody.
You gotta have the contacts, you got, you know, the water department can tell you who it is and the addresses, and, and then what you're talking about would be perfect, because, you know, you talk about spotlight grants? Let's have a, let's have a, let's have a list of the houses that we know that needs to be fixed in, in the town.
Yeah.
We're going around, look at the nice ones, well, we start making a list of the ones that's, that's terrible shape, let's, let's do the opposite. I mean, seriously.
Well, then you get to the ones that are.
Well, then you get to the ones that are.
There's one right o- right, right down the street here, I've lived down here forty-four years, and nobody's ever been in it. You know what I mean, that's no point, let's go around, look at some of these houses, been abandoned for years, make a list of those addresses, put them on a long list.
People said no to me, when I'm talking about other things.
I mean, we're going on the good side, but maybe we oughta start on the bad side.
Yeah.
And then if they're not livable, then try to.
This is trying to help people somehow.
Yeah.
And then the third prong is bring in the higher gut, which is Dave.
But I mean, you.
And the police.
At least we have a list of them to know where they're at, and let's, let's start getting, I mean, if that's what you want this board to, if we're gonna accomplish anything, I don't know, I think we're getting kind of away from our voting board here.
Right.
But I mean. And that, but that's the issue, we got houses after houses set there for years, and nobody's done nothing about it.
I know it.
Because of whatever reasons, but, but if they're, if they're rehabable, then we need to start getting housing grants invented.
I, I know.
And then you'll see, then you'll start seeing a difference.
What about Habitat for Humanity, they still around here?
Once in a while, the city gives them a lot.
There's, uh, where they're building one right across from the old Lincoln School right now.
Well, what's that?
Across from the old Lincoln School.
Oh, the old, really, Lincoln School, I remember.
A couple of years back, I helped with some in, uh.
I didn't know that, well, there've been several, a lot.
Yeah, I remember when Gary was in office, he, he suggested Habitat for Humanity lots about three different times.
Yeah, the city's got lots everywhere that they own, that, there's two on Hudson Street over here that were built.
Yeah. John.
We want to owe business, we need to update on the razor wire, you have a update for us, Dave, or anything?
Yes, that passed, it's still being announced, it's got ninety days to comply, the two offenders have been notified to get in compliance.
And then with that, they also changed the wording from the height of the fence to six foot, so eight foot, correct? And then recommendation of our variance that was passed also.
On Hoffman's side.
Hoffman's side.
As a hospital, hospital tested too.
It is being recorded, but ninety-nine year lease.
Well, I thank everybody for that, right?
Yeah.
And you'd be done.
Who are the two offenders, People's Bank and who is the other? Uh, People's Bank? Who are the two offenders, uh, People's Bank?
People's Bank, well, I know.
Well, I know, well, the sheriff's office, but we didn't even deal with that, yeah.
No, in the ordinance, I think that is, that spelled out in the ordinance.
I've got a sixty, so.
And then the federal bill.
I got my copy of it.
They're excellent anyway.
Any other own business?
I was gonna ask Dave if he got, uh, permits for that pet wash.
No, that's not, that's, that's a part of the structure in there.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I didn't really look at, and also behind Whipple Boys, that street there.
Hickory Street.
I was out at Legion's Bank, did you get that picture for me?
Yeah, those people don't.
Did they have a permit? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Good, good.
That makes me happy.
Oh, yeah, but yes, we really get a couple.
Because they were building, I heard the hammers in the back of the house, I wondered what.
God, they're helping the major, so they didn't get too close to the line.
Sounds good.
They, that house is just wow.
Is it?
Inside is just wow.
Who lives there?
The, the people that work at it now.
Oh, really?
No, the, the employees, or independent kind of.
Is that why the house had the roof that, or the stilts that were on it forever?
I was just wondering though about the back of the house, because they were hammering back.
Yeah, they handled that on, they gave you the picture, that was a terrible place, and that was up for demolition, and they came in there and we had it. I've sold them a couple of other places, and they're saying we're in, we don't wanna do it.
Well, with that place across from St. Joe's, that two-story house, that was just, not really falling in.
Oh, okay.
You know.
They built up that porch, now, somebody from California owns that place, I don't really know who it is.
I don't know, but I, I hope it is a good.
Oh, miscellaneous business?
Tom, the solar panels you were talking about, do we have a ordinance on solar panels?
No, we do not.
Do you think we need to talk to Tom about it because?
The city directors only had two houses here in the last two months to get solar panels, one was on Jackson Street, the next was just right down from Jackson Street, the mayor, I'm not working with this lady, she cleared it up. I don't know, Pennsylvania or Beryl or some of that area, a heck of a deal, I mean, it's a fifty thousand dollar deal, the time you get done with it, it was thirteen, and it's kind of interesting.
But I was just wondering, Tom explained, explained that.
Well, they come down the byway meeting for solar panels, and said that the, the savings wouldn't overshadow what I was gonna put into it. Now, they said, that being said, you can move on the south side of your house, you got, I got a big lot out there, and I said, no, I said, I think that would make the yard look crappy. And have you guys, I, I was curious if you had any ordinance on solar panels, and I kinda looked around on the internet, and theirs was, well, you, you should put it on the side of your house or the road, where it's not facing the street, to where it's not a, you know, eyesore. And then it also, uh, they've got some of them that it has to be, uh, how to say that, cylindrical, is that the one I'm wanting to say, or it's perfectly.
Symmetrical.
Symmetrical.
Yeah.
Symmetrical.
Where it's, it's not an eyesore on, even on your roof, you know.
I have solar panels on my house, and I've had them there for five years now, they're close to five.
Well, you got a pretty open spot there on the south side.
But when I put them in, that was something I was very interested in, because I, I'm part of a covenant, out of Mary Lake, and so I was very interested in what our covenant said, which it said nothing, but then I was also interested in if there were any potential ordinances. And I could be wrong at this point, but when I looked up something in regards to that fact, when I got my panels, I believe, as per Illinois state law, it is illegal for a community to pass an ordinance to prohibit any placement of the solar panels. Now, some of the things. On the basis of, of, uh, aesthetics.
Aesthetic.
Now, you can have guidelines on how the panels are installed, like safety requirements, uh, there are some, uh, wiring, you know, those type of guidelines, but to prohibit a panel from being installed solely on, it's gonna make the, the neighborhood look bad, I believe that's illegal.
Really?
Yeah.
I believe so.
So you're saying we don't need an ordinance?
Now, I, I could be wrong, obviously not an attorney, but from when I researched it, I believe that it is illegal to.
And that maybe is Illinois, because I, I looked up other communities, and something like rolling in the very.
See, Illinois is very friendly to solar, we, as far as that goes. Or, well, they want this seen for, they screwed everyone else, but.
Thank you.
There, there's a lot of, uh, uh, eco laws on the books that, that regulate that.
Are there something coming up here now that you can't put the power back on the grid?
Yeah, the Emirates lobbying for that, they don't want to.
It's a matter of.
Yeah.
We're put, they're still on one there, Johnny Logan College is gonna run, oh, quite a bit of this college's power.
And see, see, I've made more money than selling my energy back than I have in any other fashion.
If you got a ten kilo off.
I'm five and some change.
I understand. And you're saying five years?
Yeah.
I was under miscellaneous business, I have a question for you, Dave, what happened with the old Presbyterian church, did they back down on that?
Oh, for the businesses.
I heard, I heard did your effects, and that lady, yeah.
And Dave, let me ask you something, the baby can eat that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the baby.
Um, let's say they came in here.
Baby cup.
And specifically said, it's gonna be a one-chair nail salon today, one chair, one operator. How would we know if they had expanded that to two chairs, three chairs?
That's a good question, that'd be kinda tough, I guess you'd have to go get the nails done.
But any of the special use permits specifically says that?
I think the neighbors in that neighborhood would've been up here, you know, want this.
Yeah.
I just wonder.
Have we looked, get anything on Wilson Street trailer yet?
Yeah, we sent out and asked the grants for that, we can get those all completed on that soon.
All right, Dave.
Yeah, get right on the ball.
Public comment?
I have a question.
We've been public comment.
I, I always. I was wondering about this when I was talking about cleanups and said, how successful, because I was out, having to be out of town a week, get of the spring cleanup, how successful was that?
I wa- I wasn't involved, I wasn't there, I don't know how, uh, I don't know.
Does anybody know?
Rachel would, would know, she was there.
Rachel would be the one I would.
I can give you my moral before.
Maybe we should do a fall cleanup.
I agree, that's something that I want to, now, put together. Time, it's hard, it's hard timing, the days of that schedule.
Fall cleanup and fall cleanup, if we did that every year, that would be.
Absolutely.
A good thing.
Hey, you know, uh, our bedroom TV went out, it's fine, it was no big deal, it's cheap anymore, but anyway, you gotta load it, they have, drive to carve a nail. That's the whole place around that.
Well, the city did it once a year, whatever, a while back, you know, where you put all the VCRs on, electronics and stuff, that's like, I was in high school, I don't remember what that was. Well, I think they had, they had a, a lot of, some dump in those high school parking lot, didn't they? Oh, my gosh, no, I don't know, I don't.
But you know.
The people were supposed to be there. People are doing that stuff, they come from all, like, tires, they come from all.
But you know.
People, you're supposed to be in there from eleven o'clock to four o'clock, and they left at three, some people that showed up between four o'clock and five o'clock. They just lucked it.
They're talking about Debbie. Now, this is fine.
I draw myself up, but there was a lot of people, so I was there, I was between that, that hour, I had my stuff, and a lot of people did. Any. Hey, just bring it back to order, do you have any more other comments?
Breaks was getting out there a lot.
Oh, I think it's a big deal, I mean, I think you guys doing the right direction is.
They're paying a lot of pain now.
But I was talking about the trash covers, because I meant that when the public went out.
I actually, I have one more thing.
Oh, okay, I'm on, I'm not even joking, not even joking. The city did help with that, would you ever hear anything about?
I'll tell you, asking anything about that tour going up to the new.
I've heard anything more about it.
They're gonna let it drop, ain't they?
I have no idea. Um, last month when we were in here, uh, he, he isn't here, and I wish Mr. Perkins was here.
Yeah.
Um, there were a few statements made about Dave, and the more I thought about it, the more stuck in my craw about it, anytime we've asked something of Dave, he's been thorough, he's been, uh, you know, more than happy to help. I've, I've worked with him on a bunch of other stuff outside of that, and I find his knowledge on a variety of subject knowledge to be expansive and articulate, barnum. And, uh, I, I, I thank Dave for all his work to the commission and to the city, um, I think it was taken, uh, at, for, for granted that, uh, he was doing things on city time. And, and that was, that notion wasn't challenged, and I'm challenging that, because I know that guy puts in a lot of work for this town, when, you know, some people might think he's doing work for somewhere else. But the last I checked, he's an employee, and employees work for a set number of hours, and if they're, they go off and fly a kite, or they're going off and working for, on another job, it doesn't matter, once you put your hours in, that, that's all that matters.
So you're challenging what I said.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we need to be, be glad too, you bring your events, I'll bring mine. And like I said, I tell you, I'm very honest with Dave, I told him right to his face what I felt, Perkins, I don't care what he said on it. My question was, the issues that was involved, I've got the information, and I don't appreciate you sitting there challenging me for something that you don't know.
I may not, and I, I'd be happy.
Well, I'm willing to sit down with you and this board and show it.
Yep. But I, I don't think.
And I appreciate your opinion.
Yep.
But don't tell me mine.
Well, I, I don't think that coming in here and, and saying something about it is the right place, I think maybe.
Where should I done it?
I, I don't know, that, that's not my decision.
Actually, where you're actually.
This is the perfect place.
This is where it goes.
You know, that's the reason I come up here, and I challenge Perkins on stuff, I challenged him on, on his hiring practice, you know, when everybody knows a month before he even puts it in a newspaper, then it's, it's political, it's a hard, it's political, and I'm gonna challenge him hard. So, yes, this is always the perfect place to do it, face to face, no backstage, straightforward.
And let me follow up with that, we've been doing this about six years, and what we do is not easy. Okay, no, I'm just glad that's telling you.
I know that.
Okay, because we got things involved, we know people involved, and we find out stuff, okay, that man, as I said, that Dave, are you biding on me, Dave?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
This is a public place.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we're getting a little bit closer for it, you know.
That, that's fine.
Did you get me close enough to that, Dave?
So, my question on that was, Dave worked with us at the hospital.
Did you get me good?
Okay. On it, and that's exactly what we were talking about, Dave assisted us in what we were doing, uncovering issues, okay, on it. So, it wasn't a personal vendetta, it was multiple questions, on the time that he was spending with the city, to do private law firm, or eastern township, or, uh.
We're getting ready to.
We had multiple issues, that's exactly what it was. Well, a lot of hats.
I understand.
Yeah, you did. You know.
Anything else?
No, I'm done.
Good.
Give me any?
Nope, thank you.